Call to order, the city council work session for City of East Grand Forks Tuesday, November 12th, 2019 is now five o'clock. City Clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Seadgander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Reapell.
Here.
Tim Johnson. Mark Demers.
Present.
Does turn. Coram number one, presentation of arena feasibility study. Mr. Reed Hutton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just, as you can see, I've got a lot of guests with today, so I'm just gonna just do a quick introduction of our ice arena assessment and the feasibility study that we hired JLG Architects and their consultants to put together for us going back to June of this summer. Of course, over the course of the last few months, we spent a lot of time with the consultants and members of our staff within our Park and Rec Department, Brian Larson, Mark Dragich, the rest of our team, and some members of our Parks and Rec Commission to try to take a really long, hard look at our ice arenas as they stand today, some of the deferred maintenance we have within the ice plants themselves, the age of those buildings, and be able to ultimately deliver you this feasibility study as we've discussed, going back to our meetings this spring of the potential to look at whether or not expansion on the Civic Center to add a second ice sheet was a viable option for us from a building perspective, and what it might look like to flip the VFW arena from an ice rink into being more of an all-purpose season or an all-season facility. So with some of those goals in mind, maybe just pops the next slide, yeah. Some of the goals in mind of that, that was really our goal as we went through this process, was really looking at the building, and when we talked about our programming needs within the buildings, I feel like our group really started with and focused first and foremost on recognizing the age of those buildings and some of the deficiencies they may have from a programming, we're gonna call programming perspective, you hear us talk about that tonight, from a safety and security perspective of our users, our actual users of the facilities as well as our guests that visit the facilities, how can they safely access the building, how does the building operate for them if they're, say, a figure skater using locker rooms, or they're a hockey player trying to use locker rooms with dated cogender restrooms, all the way down to accessibility of the viewing areas, and whether or not there are things like handrails in places that in today's standard, they're expected to be handrails. We spent a lot of time focusing on those types of needs when we talked about our wish or our need list and how these buildings are programmed. And then there's people here too that spent a lot of time looking through the mechanical and the electrical aspects of the older buildings we have, ultimately to get to the report that I'll let all of them go through tonight. So just first and foremost, I wanted to thank all the guys that consulted, we have some Park and Rec Commissioners here tonight that were involved, a few city council members that were involved through those Park and Rec Commission meetings. So I think we have a good start on our report here that I want to stress right from the beginning, I know Mike's gonna stress it too, but one that we still view at this point is very much a living document in that we want to hopefully seek some discussion from all of you tonight on the potential for a project of this magnitude, how it meets the needs of the community or the wants of the community, and then hopefully get some direction back on what the next steps need to be if we're gonna try to pursue anything. So with that, just introductions to get started, and then I'll hand it off to the team here. Starting on the left in the light blue shirt, that's Scott Ward. Scott Ward is with B-32 Engineering, so he's the ice rink consultant with the group. Jeremiah Christensen in the navy blue is with Obermiller Nelson Engineering, covering the mechanical and electrical aspects. And Mike McLean is with JLG Architects, he's the project manager. In the back behind, Ross Young is with Obermiller Nelson, and Andrew Budkey is with JLG Architects as well. So this whole group was very involved through the summer in putting together this report. And with that, we've just got some slides we'll go through, and then there'll be some time at the end of our presentation for any questions that you guys may have. So we'll start with Mr. Ward.
Great. Well, good evening. Well, the heart and soul really of any ice arena facility is really the ice system, refrigeration system, the ice rink floor, the dashboard, so I want to just start off with that a little bit and talk about those systems. If we talk about the Civic Center, that system has been, a big part of the refrigeration system is original to the building. There's been some upgrades over the years with the compressors, the condensers and so forth, but the, some of the mechanicals, the electrical, the pumps and so forth are original, which is, you know, forty-some years old. So you've gotten good use out of those. The mechanical room is pretty tight, as you can see, it's underneath the bleacher system, the picture on the left there, you're looking at the compressors and you're looking at the electrical panel. That's an R-22-based system, as you've probably heard already, R-22 will be phased out of production or no longer produced after 2020. You'll be able to use it as long as it's available, but after 2020, they'll no longer be producing it in the United States, it'll no longer be allowed to be used in new equipment. Right now, R-22 is actually on a low cost right now just because of all the surplus, but as the years go on, that price of R-22 will rise up pretty quickly. It's an indirect system, it's, and the reason I'll talk about that a little bit, because it's different than the VFW system, so it's indirect where all the refrigerant really basically is in the mechanical room, then we do a heat exchange in that system, and you're putting glycol out into the floor, and glycol circulated through the rink floor. The rink floor is not as old, it's 26 years old, there's no reported problems with it, other than the subfloor heating system does not work, it's an electric subfloor system, and at some point that started to stop working. What that really does is limit the length of the season that you can operate. So usually you can operate six to seven months without a subfloor heating system, beyond that, you're really risking the frost driving down into the ground and causing some damage to the structure, damage to the building structure, damage to the rink, and it costs a lot of money to remove, and it takes a lot of time to remove it. So that's the one limitation with the existing rink floor the way it is. The dashboards have been up, are fairly new, I think within the last couple of years, 2015, 2016. I know there's some ADA concerns with that, other than that, they're in pretty good shape. So overall, that's, you know, what we consider the ice system, they are very, you know, they are an expensive piece to this project, very expensive piece to operate, and so we want to spend a lot of time on looking at options. Some of the upgrade options, you can look at, you know, you can replace what you have, and what we'd really recommend for this type of facility, and really where we are as a society with natural, with a lot of the environmental concerns with synthetic refrigerants, is we'd recommend you go with a natural refrigerant such as ammonia. And if you did that, then we would look at building a new, or moving the mechanical room to a different space inside the building, if you're gonna go with a single system to operate this facility. So that's just a quick overview on the Civic Center, it's the VFW rink. So this system's a little bit different, it's a direct system, it still uses R-22 refrigerant, but it uses a lot more of R-22 refrigerant, because the refrigerant's actually pumped out through the rink floor. Very efficient system, it's probably one of the most efficient systems on the, in our industry right now. Unfortunately, there's a couple of downfalls, is one, it uses a lot of refrigerant. That previous system for the Civic Center, that probably uses 1,200 pounds of R-22 roughly. This system is using roughly 6,000 pounds of R-22. But again, it's a very efficient system, the other downside of it is that it circulates that refrigerant in the rink floor, so you're exposing, potentially exposing spectators to any leaks or anything that might happen out on the floor. The floor is original to the building, I believe, from, so it's, you've got...
1982.
1982. So it's, you've gotten your money out of the floor for sure. The first place that usually fails on a direct system like this is the floor, and so far, there hasn't been reported too many problems with the floor, so you've gotten good life out of that. The refrigeration system is older, it was installed in 1997 as a used system, so they don't know, I don't think we know exactly how old that system is. But it's, again, it's an industrial system, as in the Civic Center, so they do get a lot of life out of them, it was well-built, but it is running into the point where, you know, you really gotta consider replacement of these systems. Once a direct system starts to leak like this, you're, you just have a lot of exposure financially, just because of the 6,000 pounds of refrigerant that you have in there. Right now, that refrigerant is probably eight to 10 bucks a pound right now, but just a year and a half ago, it was 35 bucks a pound. And it'll continue to go up and up, you know, and now that it's gonna be phased out in 2020, so your exposure only increases after 2020 with a system like this. So that's, other than that, that's a quick overview of the two systems.
Thanks, Scott.
Yep.
Obviously, the ice systems is a big part of this study, but we also, through this summer, we wanted to look at the rest of the facility, so the, look at the physical condition of the buildings, the other systems, so mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and then also with that, as Reed mentioned, programming needs, so spending some time with the string committee to identify what are some of the needs of each facility. And so through the report, you'll see these different colors, and they categorize different types of improvements, and that translates into the investment list that was developed, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, but it's just a way to help visualize and illustrate the different types of conditions and recommendations. In the report appendix, you'll see a more detailed assessment of each facility, again, illustrating the physical, general conditions, mechanical, electrical, in addition to the ice systems. And then with those, there are supporting photos that highlight some of those different conditions. So this is just an example of the Civic Center, a few items. And then this is that investment list, it's probably, probably hard to read if you have the handout, but this is really the tabulation of all those different items that we identified in those categories for each building. As you can see on the Civic Center, a lot of it has to do with those gray, the grays and the oranges on the bottom, which is more of the systems. Finish-wise, there really isn't a whole lot that's concerning there, and then accessibility and code compliance are a couple of the higher items on the list. But this investment list was developed, it's a working document, a spreadsheet, where the committee was able to say, well, let's include this in, let's take this out, let's see what this means. And so the intent is that this can continue to be used as a working document as the discussions further with the community. So we'll go over just a high level, we're not gonna go through that entire list line item by line item, but really give you an assessment of the major items on each facility. So with the Civic Center, we'll start with the site improvements, the parking lot condition obviously is something that should be addressed soon, and then with that, accessibility to the building, so having compliant accessible parking spaces and an accessible route to the building was one thing that we identified as a major item. Within the building, there's a lack of accessibility to the main ice rink floor, and I believe you guys have looked at in the past of, you know, what would it take to add an elevator to that facility, but it's also the player access, this is an image of that player access stair on the east side of the building. And then Jeremiah is gonna talk a little bit about the mechanical, electrical systems, and then I'll jump back and talk about a few other things, so.
Perfect. Thanks, Mike. So life safety wise, building is not sprinkled, you'll see that as a common theme between both, something that should be addressed as we do any major renovation work in the building. Along with that, the mechanical systems, one are very sparse, very kind of bare bones for what's there, they don't meet the current ventilation codes. We don't have dehumidification systems, and so we're limited to the amount of ice time we can have throughout the year. And we don't, we're not real efficient in what we're doing, right? So in terms of, we have some residential furnaces installed in the building, and so as we look at the building holistically, and we look at the next 30 or 40 years of how to use that building, major infrastructure upgrade would be recommended. And then electrically, again, some life safety things, we need to address the fire alarm system to improve our life safety in the building, security cameras and car access would certainly be something that would be good for the building, along with getting rid of fluorescent, going to all LED lighting, and just upgrading our major electrical switch gear. So mechanically and electrically, there's a lot of work to be done in the building.
And we, Scott already had talked about the ice system, so I'll skip through that one. And then the last item, in this kind of brighter orange, those are those program needs that they're, again, they're not the physical condition, but it's some of the spaces and some of the spaces that are needed. So through our discussions, we talked about the size and quantity of the lockers are lacking for the building uses at the Civic Center. The location is not ideal, and that's with the east side of the building where those lockers are located, the floor is sunken, so it's not the same level as the ice, which is problematic for accessibility again. Player and penalty rooms are not currently full-size, and there's an undersized player bench, and there's a need for an enlarged dry land room at the facility. So those are some of the program needs that were identified, the major ones at the Civic Center. Moving over to the VFW arena, again, site improvements, parking was another one identified, and this was more through discussion about just safety of that parking lot, especially in the winter when it can be a little iceier, when there's multiple things going on at the blue line in the VFW, and then also around the building, some of the drainage issues, and that has to do a little bit with the envelope of the building as well, and we'll get to that in a second. Lighting has also been expressed as a concern. You can see here, the parking lot's fairly well-lit, but it's that sidewalk that leads up to the entrance on the south side of the memorial arena, and then the parking along the east side of the blue line, I think, was identified as an issue as well. Here's an example of that envelope condition where there's not, on the north side, there's not a gutter system, downspout system, so what's happening here is the water essentially just flowing down the side of the building, and it's, over time, that soil is starting to depress in, and so your grading is actually going towards the building. So some things like that aren't major, water tightness of the roof, those things can be addressed fairly easily, but those are, those can be major problems with water, as you know, if they're not addressed, something that we saw in our walk-through. Here, there's a little bit more on the interior finishes versus the Civic Center, and obviously, at the Civic Center, you guys have done a lot of renovations, and that's pretty good, but here at the VFW, some of the bigger items are where we have places like restrooms and concessions where by code, having a porous floor is problematic from the health department standpoint, so those are just things that, if you do do some upgrades, whether it's the mechanical, electrical systems, you want to look at upgrading those things at the same time, to kind of make that the most efficient, so.
Very similar to the other building in terms of, we need to address life safety with the sprinkler system, no dehumidification, probably upgrading the entire mechanical system to a hot water hydronic system would be the major recommendation. The water heaters are aged, need some insulation on the plumbing, just kind of a holistic, all-around mechanical upgrade in the building. Electrically, again, very similar, we should put in a mass notification system for the building and upgrade the fire alarm or install a fire alarm system, again, life safety issues to be addressed when we have events going on in the building. And then just replacement, you can see in the picture here, it's pretty typical, the building, surface mount, fluorescent lighting, just needs, should be upgraded to LED as we do major work in the building.
And again, Scott talked about the ice system, so we won't waste your time with that, we can come back to the questions at the end on those pieces. Programmatic needs for the VFW arena, this is related to the recommendations, but there has been identified a need for a multipurpose facility in East Grand Forks, and this was, been identified as a location for that, as a potential repurpose. Whether it stays an ice arena or if it gets converted, it was identified that the concessions area needs to be renovated with updated equipment along with the flooring, as we talked about earlier. So in the end, we kind of wrapped all that together to see what was, what made the most sense with discussions with the committee, and again, using that investment list to vet different ideas. And the recommendation that we came up with at the end was to add an additional ice sheet to the Civic Center arena and convert the VFW arena into a multipurpose facility. And there's a few things that we want to touch on here as why we recommended that. Again, it goes back to, I think, why the study was started, was that with the phasing out of the R-22, both rinks will need replacements of their ice refrigeration system soon, so looking at combining those ice plants into one system and putting a new ice lab in a new building would be a logical primary investment from our perspective. Consolidating two of the cities into ice sheets under one roof will help keep costs down for staffing, utilities, and overall savings on long-term maintenance. The primary competition rink is badly in need of locker room upgrades and accessibility needs, a new ice sheet could provide a solution for those items without additional costly renovations to the Civic, and we'll get into some of those options here in a little bit, and we can talk about those more specifically. Visitors to East Grand Forks for events such as tournaments will have a better, a far better experience by being able to use one facility instead of the two separate ones. So just having logistics, having both rinks at the same location will be ideal, and also if there's other events that you want to use that floor for. Two rinks in the same building allows greater opportunity for dry floor offseason events. And then East Grand Forks has invested in several renovations at the Civic Center already, it's a primary choice for events due to its location, capacity, and fan experience. You know, it's a great, a great space already, and so adding a second ice sheet furthers this investment and strengthens all the amenities. And the VFW arena has the opportunity to be converted into a multipurpose facility, as we mentioned, that would allow, that would include a field turf, a four-lane walking track, and this could provide space for a lot of the programs, athletic programs, and for others as well as a multipurpose facility, which sounded like that was something in talking with the street committee was a need in the community. So with the Civic Center expansion, we looked at two options, expansion on the west side and expansion on the east side. First, looking at the west expansion option, it seemed that this had more advantages, you know, at least looking at this early on, and like Reed mentioned, this isn't a design, this is a, this is a study that we're looking at, okay, if it was placed on the site, what are some high-level things that we're looking at here as this would move forward, or if it would move forward, we have to dive into it obviously a lot more, but some of the high-level things that we did see was that a west expansion would allow for a new accessible entrance adjacent to the main entrance, so that's where you could include an elevator and access to that lower level of the Civic Center. There would be a shared spine for general locker rooms on the west side between the two ice sheets, which would allow for locker room space on the same level as the ice, and then above that could be an opportunity for some shared viewing space and meeting room or support spaces. One thing that we did note in the walk-through of the Civic Center is that the egress widths around that upper concourse are pretty narrow, they're like five feet, and so this wouldn't actually change the existing, but having that shared spine, you'd have the ability to open that wall up and create a little bit more space for patrons. So it'd be a convenience thing for people that are attending an event at either, at either side of the building. There'd be a centrally-located ice plant, a new boys locker room on the expansion side of the facility, and potentially other locker room expansion. Existing player entrance would be discontinued for public use on, again, on the east side, and then that entrance and weight room area has the potential to be converted to ballpark concessions or restrooms. So where that weight room is on the east side of the building, acknowledging that the ball fields are there, that was talked about with the committee, is that could we convert that space potentially to serve the ballparks, and so that could be done. And that obviously is another thing you could look at on the, if you expand it on the east side. The existing locker rooms on the east side would be converted into building storage. When you do that, your HVAC requirements are much less, you wouldn't really have to do anything with it versus renovating them where they're at to get them up to code, it'd be pretty significant. So that'd be a much more efficient way to do that if you did the expansion on the west side. There's also a minor issue with the bowing of the lower-level wall on the west side of the Civic Center. We did have our structural engineer take a look at that, and just basically said that with the, it's likely due to expansive clays in the soil, but also that now the code standards as far as reinforcing those walls is more than what it was then, and so you are experiencing that bowing, but if you did build on the west side, you'd essentially be excavating that soil out, which would relieve that pressure, so you wouldn't have to worry about that bowing any further in the future, so it would resolve that issue. So those are some advantages. The east side had some advantages as well, again, you would essentially take over the east parking side for that expansion, and you'd have closer amenities to the ballpark. Some concerns during our discussions is historically, it sounds like the water table on the east side is fairly high, so there would be some concerns about that. If you ever did do a building there, you'd have to obviously get soil borings and confirm that you have issues there to deal with. The utilities that come into the building now are on the west side of the building, so to build on the east side, you'd have to extend those utilities, which would be a little bit more costly. And then just going back to the issue of the floor levels of the, where the locker rooms are now on the east side, to get accessibility and to get the floor on the lower level to be at the same as the ice sheet, there would be more cost to get that floor leveled. Right now, the floor is sunken about three feet down from the ice level, and so you'd have to infill that, versus on the west side, that's already at the ice level. So having that access from both levels would be, would be a little bit easier. So those are some of the things we looked at, again, this is a first pass at a couple of options that seem to make sense. Both would have about 600 parking spots for the west expansion or the east expansion, looking at expanding some of the parking to the south and starting to look at what that might be, so. At the VFW, really from the building perspective, the footprint didn't change at all or anything like that, no significant changes, really more looking at reconfiguration of the parking lot to add parking spaces and to create a safer drop-off area at the blue line, and then also with that, looking at some sidewalk access or connections to make it a little bit safer to go between buildings. Within the building, looking at, in the arena volume, looking at removing the bleachers seating and adding that turf and track system, more lighting and some HVAC upgrades. The, let's see if I missed anything here, oh, and then some of the public areas would recommend being renovated, again, that front lobby space, some of the toilet rooms that have some flooring and accessibility issues, and the concessions were identified as a programming need. So those are some of the site options we looked at, and then, again, going back to that investment list, we wanted to try to get a realistic start to this project, to say, okay, here's all your scenarios, based on what we saw, we want to develop some quantities that we think that are in the ballpark range of what you would be looking for, and with this option, came up with a budget summary, and so we'll go through that, and then we can open it up to questions. So on the construction side, for a Civic Center expansion, this is approximately 45,000 square feet, it's about 9.5 million. For the East Grand Forks Civic Center renovation, that's about 3.6 million. The VFW renovation, it's about 2.7 million with a subtotal construction cost of 15.8 million. Site work for the East Grand Forks Civic Center and VFW arena would be about 2.5 million, and again, it's largely what you looked at with addressing some of those parking issues and accessibility, lighting, improving the lighting, and looking at stormwater improvements as well. And then with contingency at 2.7 million, that gives you a total construction cost of about 21 million. And that equates to adding that 45,000 square feet, you're looking at about 155,000 total square feet of programmable area that you have in your facilities, so that ends up being about $133 a square foot in total for construction for that option. And then the costs that are outside of the construction, called soft costs, these are all the other things that are needed for a project, so your professional fees, your furniture fixtures and equipment, technology, surveys, geotechnical, so the soil borings that we talked about, inspections, permits, and special testing for construction. These are all placeholders based on, just based on what you see in other projects, they're not exact. Again, once this project gets into the details of actually getting into a design, all this will change, but again, we want to look at a good starting point, and so this is where this recommendation's at today anyways, so. So I think that's all we had as far as our presentation and recommendations, and wanted to get through that to allow for some questions, I know there's probably gonna be some, so I appreciate your time, and we'll open it up to questions.
I'll probably finish, too.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things. So with the Civic Center renovation, whether it's laid out on the west or the east expansion, is there opportunity for future expansion? I know we're just barely talking about expansion now, but, you know, I've seen in other facilities where it's kind of laid out in a way that if you needed to add another sheet or you wanted to add more, is the only other way to go, would it be to that other side? So if you went west, you'd have to go east, or could you keep going west, or?
Yeah, I think you could look at all those scenarios, I think it's just, that's something we didn't look at closely as far as like, okay, if we expand past the program needs that we had, we didn't look into that, but, you know, with the west expansion, for example, there you'd have some, you'd have some parking lot space that you could take up, the disadvantages, you'd have less parking on the site for some of those bigger events. So you have some, I think you have some limitations on the west side as far as if you're gonna get any bigger than that. On the east side, with the ballparks, you'd have to, if you expand farther to the east, you'd have to look at moving those ballparks or doing something with that, or changing... you'd have to look at moving those ballparks or doing something with that or changing the function of that, that park area. But there's opportunities to do that. There's also, we also looked at opportunities where if you do consolidate both systems, you have the option to put that new plant inside the new expansion, but you also could put that in the existing building and you could size it so you could expand later. So there's ways to do that where, you know, you wouldn't have to, to put it in the new, you could, you could set it up for a future expansion. If you decide to go with the expansion right away, it makes sense to, to do it all in a new construction. Just going to be more efficient versus upgrading your existing ice system or, or renovating a space large enough to accommodate a future one. So those are some things we looked at, but.
Does, does this account for, or did address any of like the, the water or the flooding issues on the north side? Or did we, you know, with the, with the access from the, what is it, 17th or?
Of the heavy rainfall flooding?
Yeah.
We didn't, we, they, they're aware of it, but we didn't get into the weeds on, on going into detail on how to alleviate any of that. No. You know, we see that still, actually, if you go in there right now, we still have groundwater seeping into the floor of the civic from the heavy rain we had in September, just because the water table specifically on the east side of the building is so high. So that's one thing that's I think accounted for when they talk about pros and cons of west versus east is we have a lot more of those issues, it seems like, on the west side of the building than we do on the, on the, I'm sorry, on the east side of the building than we do on the west side.
Um, one thing I, I mean, if we did end up going forward with, with improvements to this area, one thing I think you kind of touched on is touching or addressing the, the baseball issues and you know, I could see something where we would kind of eliminate those two fields and maybe move our main field from stealth park to there, make it more accessible. You could probably gain some parking if you had maybe one field there instead of two. I know we've kind of talked something about that, but that would be an advantage to, you know, one of the, maybe the east side is you could build some lockers or, you know, clubhouse type things built into that. The only other thing is on the VFW project, wondering if there's a way that we could enhance the east or the northeast access? Because we do, you know, you, you show that we do have parking issues over there, you know? We do have a nice parking lot over there that isn't specifically, you know, for those. But if you, if you're able to reconfigure things out of the east instead of out of the, whatever, the southwest, is that, you know, a possibility or is it just one more access that we would have to manage and you wouldn't want that or?
When we went through some of our programming meetings, we actually discussed whether or not there'd be the potential to, to almost make that, if you want to call it that southeast entrance to the VFW, to actually make that the primary entrance? Because it almost is used more as a more common primary entrance right now than the front entrances. Depending upon the load of the building and how full the lot is, a lot of the locals know to go there rather than the front. But when we discussed that as a group in our programming meetings, we, we ultimately we ended up wondering, and of course, we didn't study it at all, but wondering if that problem would be alleviated by it no longer being a hot, an ice arena? If we made improvements to the front parking lot and there's no longer, you know, bags of equipment being dropped off and rolled through the door and closer to the locker rooms in the back and it's a place where people are coming to exercise and maybe not as much of an emphasis on a team locker room style setting, that improvements to the front parking lot may alleviate that back entrance from even being used at all and just almost maybe putting more of an emphasis on funneling people through to the front lot, recognizing that the blue line arena, we don't have a plan to change how that operates and that front entrance is in that main parking lot. And regardless of what we do with the VFW, we, you know, there, there could be some improvements made to that lot. So we talked about it in a program meeting, we almost ended up circling back around to saying that we should find a way to start focusing funneling the, the patrons of the building through the front doors rather than through that back entrance.
That's all for right now, just to get it started.
A couple of things I have, things I, I know I did ask a couple of people too on this, but when you're looking at these, and I know in the past when we looked at, we did some work in the civic center and one of the things that got brought up and I was talking with Nancy during that process, we need some upgrades there. A lot of things that we talked about was the ADA compliant stuff. And at what point, I mean, we're looking at this is when we're looking at a renovation of the civic center of, what do we have to do at what level? And let's say we take this study and say, well, okay, we're not going to do this, this, this and this, we're going to do this, but what are we still going to be required is X, Y, Z, all this ADA stuff required no matter what you do? And how do we approach that with the building configuration? You know, how do we, how do we attack that and take a look at that?
Yeah, so that, so that's something that with existing buildings, again, we haven't dove into it, but essentially you, you do have a grandfather situation with existing buildings to some extent where with the civic center, for instance, with some of the mechanical upgrades that you would have, you're doing some, you're doing some major work there, but you're not affecting more, likely not affecting more than 50% of the area depending on what you're doing in that existing building. You know, so for the 65,000 square feet, if you're only affecting 10,000 square feet, dealing with mechanical space, you don't have to get it up to full compliance. The one thing you would have to do if you expanded an ice sheet, you definitely would have to sprinkler because you're allowable area. It's an assembly occupancy, so the, the size of the building that you have already is not compliant. So by adding another building next to it and, and having that ability to share those spaces, I think you'd definitely be kicked into a situation where you'd have to sprinkler it. Some of the accessibility issues, you wouldn't have to address. Some of the egress issues, you wouldn't have to address. I think it's finding a balance of what's feasible in the existing buildings and what's allowed. You know, having an expansion on the west side does solve a problem of you can get an elevator built into that addition or on the east side and have, have access to that lower level. That lower level currently doesn't have accessible seating. That's an easy place to get accessible seating versus up on the concourse. And you guys already started to do that, building in some accessible seating areas, but you're taking out, you're taking out seats to do that. And so when you look at some of those items like adding accessible seating on the, on the main concourse level, adding the egress width to be, you know, three or, three or four feet wider, all of a sudden you're taking out 600 plus seats into that, you know, into that 3,400 capacity, which, which is an issue for, you know, what you want and the types of events that you have there. So I think you just have to address it as practically as you can and as, I guess, as, as thoughtful as you can to, to make sure you're accommodating in existing facilities. New buildings are obviously no brainer, you're, you're going to meet codes. But looking at solutions to, to bring it up as much as you can with, with what you're, you know, what's, what's, what, with what's feasible. And I, I don't know if Nancy, if you have anything to add to that in terms of a, from a code perspective side?
No, I, when we did the upgrades the last time, we didn't meet the threshold. Sorry, Megan. I know when she's referring to me. Yeah, no, we didn't meet the thresholds. So we looked at that point in time, we still have to have an ADA accessibility plan for all of our city buildings and we have to have a way to bring all of our buildings up to code at some point in time. So the idea of adding on to the building does help bring the civic center up to code because eventually we're going to have to bring that building up to code. It, it's a matter of time. So, and it's the same with the sprinkler system. It wasn't required because of the age of the building and because of the work that we did. But anytime we add on to it and we get above that threshold, at that point in time, why not bring all the buildings up to code so that we meet ADA accessibility and we meet, you know, the fire code as well? As far as the VFW, that's very non-ADA compliant at this point in time, even though we do have a ramp, the bathroom facilities are not ADA compliant. The ramp isn't at the right slope. We, we do have space for someone in a wheelchair to watch, but it, you know, we've still continued to look at is, are there ways we can retrofit it right now to get it ADA compliant? And that would be something, again, you know, we would have to address an accessibility plan, so.
And that's, that's one too that, you know, without getting too, too into the detail where if you do convert it, now you're putting in turf, you're, you're kind of changing the function. Are you, is the area you're affecting essentially the whole building? And so do you have to, do you have to bring it up to full compliance? And that's something that, you know, we weren't, you know, without getting into a full code study on it to, to determine that. But at this point, out of those two facilities, I think that's probably an easier one to bring up to code because you don't have those egress issues that you do with the civic center. And there are accessibility challenges, but it's a little bit easier to handle than, than you would at the civic center.
I think my biggest thing on that is that if we're going to do something, that we should probably make sure that we do the right thing and make sure that we have the right access. You know, that's where I'm coming from. So I think once we look at this and we go back to the drawing board of, okay, well, this is what we have, this is what we want to do, I always can see things being pushed aside, you know, well, we'll do that later. I think that's something that, you know, happens in any, no matter what you're doing, especially in renovations. You know, because renovations, you find out you get into it, sometimes it costs more than, you know, than you think. But I think that's something we would be, you know, realistically looking at and making sure that we're doing the right thing to make sure that we're upgrading these so that we do have accessibility for everybody.
What started this whole conversation is if we have to bring our, particularly our refrigeration systems up to a current code, which I know often includes the floor in an ice arena, you're into big dollars. And we decided as a council that if we're going to go in and do these deep renovations, now is the time to start to vision, okay, how do we want these facilities to look in 10 years and 20 years and 30 years? One of the things we wanted also was kind of a minimal, what would it take to do the retrofit? The floor, the piping, the physical plant? And you know, kind of just to bring that physical plant up to the current spec and, and durable for the next 10, 15, 20 years? Again, in all of your work, I know you do show you break out the civic center renovation, VFW renovation, but that also would have included some of these other compliance issues and so on. And again, I think we're going to go down this road and I think it's important that we do go down this road, but did we also break out kind of that minimum retrofit of the physical plant just to stabilize the facilities into the foreseeable future? And what would be the dollar amount attached to that? Just curious as part of the conversation.
Yeah, so, so we looked at that and that's about 14 million to do that. And so that's, that's addressing kind of app, tried to get it as apples, apples as we could, but you're addressing the same type of code issues in each scenario, you're addressing the same type of accessibility issues in each scenario. So at the civic center, for instance, if you're not doing an expansion, you're still spending money to build an elevator. If you're not relocating your locker rooms, you're spending more money on upgrading HVAC. So there's some, there's some things that kind of go back and forth depending on the option you select, but that was about a $14 million total number versus the, versus the, or 14 million versus 24.
So I'm clear once again, the minute we go in and put in just a new refrigeration system and piping to the floor, probably a new floor, are we doing all the ADA and all that with it?
No, sorry, I, I didn't get your question right. So, yeah, so we looked at, so really there's kind of three options we looked at as far as, okay, if you just replace what you have for refrigeration and ice systems. And so that totals 3.3 million to do, to do that at the existing facilities. And then there's two ways to look at consolidating at the civic center. You can, you can upgrade your existing plant at the civic center. So I think it's a matter of adding some chillers and some other equipment onto your existing system. And so that was, I think it was 2.7 million, I believe. And so that's a, it's a $600,000 savings roughly there. If you, if you are looking at an expansion, we think it would make sense to, to do a new ice plant in the expansion, have everything brand new. That's about 3 million, so it's about $300,000 plus. So there is some savings there to do a consolidated system versus just doing them separate. And then there's the other piece to that where now you have two different pieces of equipment or systems that you're, you're maintaining over the course of their operation versus the one. So from a utilities and maintenance perspective, it's long-term, it's a more efficient system as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. You touched on a little bit about the civic center on the, the wall that's got a little bow to it. How is that building structurally overall? Because I know back a few years ago, they had some issues with that, with the block and stuff. I mean, is it pretty sound?
Yeah, I mean, both, both facilities are pretty sound. You know, I think the VFW, there was some moisture issues or concerns that we had that are, there, there, you can address those a lot easier by just making sure your building's tight. The, the civic center, the west wall with that bowing, there was some, there was some reinforcement that was put in and it didn't seem to see any signs of that continuing to, to get any worse, something you definitely want to monitor over time. But that, that, and then I think in the, by the players entrance, the, the locker room space that's down there, there's some noticeable cracks on that side as well. And so just continuing to monitor, monitor that, but nothing significant of concern with those buildings to lead us to, to say, you know, you shouldn't put money into them. I mean, I think with the civic center, especially with the latest upgrades on the exterior, I mean, that's a, that's in pretty good shape from a physical standpoint, so.
Okay, and then a couple more. Could you go back to the cost? Back where you had it split up with the, yeah. I'm going to be the devil now, I'm good at that. Got to remember, I'm new at this, so I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, I just can't get it in my head that everything that the city does is in millions of dollars, it's never in thousands, you know what I mean? So I get a little, I ask a few questions. The, the construction part with the civic and VF and that, understand all that. The site work, I'm assuming that when you say site work, are you talking like for the building and the parking and all the site work? Or is that just?
Yeah, that's, that's for the, the building and for the parking. And I, I think I'd have to look at the, the line item to know specifically what's including in that. I know kind of in the last review with the committee on the civic center, we previously didn't have like stormwater system upgrades included in that. It was more of just repaving the existing parking lot and getting more positive drainage. So that number actually now is a little bit more to, to deal with that. I mean, the thinking there, I think, was that if you're putting that much money into the building, you want a parking lot that you're investing in at the same time. But yeah, it's, it's primarily, the majority of that's parking, but there is some additional, you know, grading and, and stuff that's factored into that and lighting and.
Okay, I'm going to move on down the line. Contingency, 2,608.
Yeah, so.
That's one that really bothers me big time. I've said it before and I'll continue saying it as long as I'm sitting here.
Yeah, so I guess, and I forget your, your name, sir.
Mark.
Mark. So, so Mark had a question and this is just an example for discussion, but about the, the water issues that you have inside the building and do we look at how we would rectify that? We didn't have a line item for that, so we don't have a cost included in that. We do have a lot of things that we try to identify in our walkthroughs, but we, there, we didn't have, we didn't catch everything. There's, there's a lot of unknowns, especially with existing buildings that you get into. And without a design, we're, we're saying we're starting with this and that contingency starts at, that's 15% contingency. So in any project, that's what we start with before we have a design. You say, okay, what's, based on your market, what's your cost per square foot for construction? You have 15% contingency as you get into detail in each one of the phases. So you get, you get closer and closer, you're picking out your finishes, your door hardware, you know what that stuff starts to cost. That number goes down in each phase and you carry about 5%. Typically you carry about 5% into construction. So that 10% covers the unknowns that you didn't, you didn't know. And then you have that 5% that you have during construction as things come up. It just, it's just a way to ensure that you're not going over budget. And usually what you do is you build in, you have your needs and your wants, you build in an, an option list with wants that you carry through the course of the project. And if you find that you're not utilizing that contingency, you have the ability to decide, okay, we're going to save that money or we're going to, we're going to actually add a couple more things in during the process. And so if you have, if you have a, you know, sophisticated team on, they'll, they'll say this is the, this is the drop dead date for some of the stuff to happen for lead times and things like that. So that's kind of how you manage that. You never want to start with that being too low because you just, we just don't have a design yet, so we don't, we don't know what it is. You start with market, today's dollars, and then you add that contingency. Another thing that this is assuming is that the escalation is zero right now. So it's based on today's dollars. In, in construction, escalation is typically 3% per year. And so that's something to consider too, if this thing was, were to happen, you know, in the future, you know, you kind of have to start tallying that up. So we try to, try to find a good balance of what we think again is realistic. And is 24 million the exact number? We don't, we don't know until we, you know, we can get in. We don't, we don't know until we, you know, we can get into the, the details of it, so.
Okay, one more. Professional fees. What are those covering?
So that's, so that's for all of us. But that's covering, that's covering your architectural services, that's covering your engineering services, ice systems in this, in this case. And that's from pre-design, so kind of the next step through schematics, design development, construction documents, all the phases that you typically have in basic services. And then that also includes construction administration. That number is typically in the range of 6 to 10%. I think this is a, this is an 8%, is a placeholder kind of in the middle. So that's, that's what those, those typically cover. Sometimes that could include owner consultants, so if you guys have, you know, if you have somebody that picks out the furniture, you might hire that directly, and we, we'll coordinate with that. Sometimes we take that on. So there's, it just depends on the project and what you're actually looking at. If you were gonna expand your concessions or a kitchen or something, we'd have a food consultant. You know, we don't know that at this point without getting into it. So those are kind of all the, the different components and, you know, what that would cover, so.
Yeah, because with those two, you know, that's about four and a half million dollars. That's a lot of money with contingency and professional fees. Especially when you don't have the money to spend, you gotta try and find it somewhere. I mean, I'm not arguing the fact that the design and everything, I mean, I know what Reed's looking for, I know what we're thinking, but. I don't know, there's a lot of costs in there that are, that seem pretty high to me. I don't know, maybe you guys are worth 1.6 million, I don't know, you know what I'm saying? But seems like a lot of money.
Any else, Mr. Jones?
No, that's it. Thank you.
We're rolling this out also for our community. And if anyone catches the gist of what we're trying to do here, I wonder if just for the conversation, I know it isn't about engineering and architectural. Historically, a lot of work's been done on our arenas and other, other facilities that we have by utilizing some volunteers in terms of labor. And also a lot's been done in fundraising with donations through some of the affiliated groups that'll benefit from this. Could we just take even a minute to, to the experts that are here, we have part of our commission and staff and so on, to, to just begin that conversation? Will this, will we have an open door to some volunteer professional labor donating to this cause? And also for fundraising? How might that go?
Yeah, so I think from the fundraising standpoint, I think what you determine, how you're gonna approach this? If you want to go that direction on, you know, how are we funding this? Is it, is it a matter of a certain avenue of whether it's sales tax or otherwise? And then a portion of it's fundraising? How we get involved typically is we can start developing the design to a point where you can start seeing what the spaces look like and what, get you visuals of what that might look like. That's pretty helpful and to get, to get people feel what they're contributing towards. So that's something we typically do on that side. From the actual volunteer time for, I think you were talking about when it actually gets into construction. I think it, it depends on really what procurement method you're gonna be selecting. So if you're, if you're hiring a construction manager, for instance, they might, they might be brought on earlier in the process and seen more as a team player. And they could work with you in the design to kind of figure out what you're planning to do. Instead of, instead of kind of reacting after the fact where they had maybe bid out an entire project? And, and work with you what, what might make sense, like demolition, for instance. That's, that's one that, there's obviously safety concerns, but it's an easy one that you could have volunteers do. And you can start working with them on how, how that plays out and come up with a strategy to, to do that, if there's people willing to do that. And, and I think most CMs, sophisticated CMs can, can help you work, work through that. On the, on the architectural side, we wouldn't really be too involved with that piece other than if there's anything related to the quality of work. Our responsibility is typically to look out for the owner and to make sure that everything's meeting code and standards and design intent. And so if they're involved with any of that work, that's not up to snuff, then that's where we would come in and say, you know, this should be corrected. And ultimately, it's up to, up to the owner or the authority having jurisdiction to say whether you, you need to, to make the change or not, so. So I don't know if that answered your question, or if there's other things you're thinking about.
I think a lot of this part of it will be internal. It wouldn't be our professional staff as a contract basis. A lot of it'll be internal with our park and rec staff, park and rec commission, trying to make some of that happen, if it's going to happen.
A little bit that I could interject to that, I, I think, Mayor Gander, to your point, part of the next steps for us, if we want to start to try to, if there's an appetite to try to continue down this road? And see what kind of interest there is in the community to do it? I think that that's part of it is, in one, in one sense, Mike hit on it right away, but potentially getting a little bit more of a conceptual design created to, to give the community maybe a little better feel than an 100-page assessment document of what exactly we're considering here. And then being able to get into the community and get into our user groups, our current and our potential user groups? And get a feel for what they, they think of it? If they think it's something that's in the realm of supporting, if it's, it meets the needs of what our community has? We haven't, to this point, we, we haven't engaged really in any of that conversation. We've had a few, you know, we all have friends in the community and we're in the arenas as they're used, and we have sidebar conversations with people to see what do you think? But we haven't really asked, or, or asked ourselves even to engage in a real community input atmosphere of, of setting up times for the public to come and see a concept and to come and give an input on what they think of it or not. We haven't discussed funding sources in any way. Certainly, I think we all feel like, especially internally within, within our department, in our park and rec commission, we feel like there, there are going to be opportunities for sponsorship rights or for some naming opportunities. I know in conversations that I've had with Tom McDonald, he's, of course, our park and rec commission chairman, but he's also a professional in this world that works in this daily. We sure feel like there's going to be opportunities for in-kind services to be a part of the project that we could make available, whether that brings down our total cost or it is traded for naming rights of different aspects. I mean, those kinds of things, I think, are all on the table. We hope if there's an atmosphere in the community that we want to push for this, we hope that our user groups will come forward that are already in the community fundraising, and we can come to a level that is achievable for them, that can help to bring down this, this total number at the end of the day. I, I think there's a lot of conversation still to be had there. That, that's part of what I feel like our next steps would be if we think we're, we're heading in a direction we want to pursue with this is to take the next, next step in engaging a little bit of that conceptual design? And then engage the community and ask for input? And really have that be the time that they can come and tell us what they think about it? And whether or not it's something we can achieve?
Anything else, sir?
So along that same line, I think it's good that, that you're starting even mentally down that road? And that you have people on your commission ready to, to take that step? I think our, our residents could reasonably assume if we walked out of this meeting and didn't talk about some of these other things, okay, here we go, we're gonna finish up with a, a new sales tax and, and we're just gonna go ahead with this thing. But I think on both ends, we'll probably prioritize the, the total of what's been offered here? And then also finding these other funding sources. As you say, this is just a first shot to start to say, is it even feasible? And also conceptually, what could it look like for alternatives? And then start with a more detailed plan. And I love your idea. We are going to have to do this even as a later agenda item. Sometimes you have to put a little more meat on the bones before you can even ask the people, are you for it or not? You know, if, if you have just a vague concept and you ask our residents, are you for it or not? Well, what am I for, what am I against? I don't even know. So you have to bring it to that next stage, exactly the work that you all are doing. To bring it to the people and say, do you support this? Is this something you can get behind? And so I'm, I'm happy we're doing exactly the process that we are.
Mr. DeMurez?
Thank you, Mr. President. So for a project with this type of scope, what would you anticipate from the time we said develop plans and specs to the ribbon cutting where the mayor gets to make a great speech? What, what type of timeline are we talking about?
Yeah, so I think, again, it goes, it can go back to how you deliver the project from a construction, design perspective, because you can overlap those to save some time. Typically, design would be around that eight, eight-month timeframe, I'd say. From pre-design through, you know, construction documents. And then construction would probably be in the, I'd say in probably the year to year and a half range.
Depending on what it hits for season.
Yeah, depending on when you start, and then there's phasing that would go into it depending on what, you know, are you, are you building a new sheet? Are you expanding or are you just renovating? You have to kind of think about operations and keeping things open during, you know, during your seasons and things like that. So that'd be a rough timeframe, I'd say. Again, if you could, can overlap those a little bit, probably save a little bit of time, but I mean, it's usually.
Two and a half to three years from the time, roughly.
Two, yeah, two, two to two and a half, I'd say is, is realistic.
And then this kind of for Reed is, now, we wouldn't be adding any more ice, you know, if we did the expansion, right? But what, and I'm not gonna ask you to be, you know, an economic analyst or, you know, of, of the area. But so what kind of impact do we think something like this is gonna do for our, our, our park and rec community, for our city? I mean, are we, do you think that you're gonna have more opportunities with this? Obviously, we're adding, the big expansion would be the fieldhouse type thing that would be new. But I mean, does this open us up for more tournament-type things? Does it open us up for additional, you know, income for businesses around town, that, that type of thing? Speak, speak to it like, more globally, you know, more than just like this is for this program or this, you know, what, what's the impact?
Well, I think it, it's impossible for me to measure and tell you exactly what, you know, what the, the savings are gonna be versus the, the added potential revenues, you know? In general, though, I, I do think, and we've talked in, when our programming meetings a lot, again, we did not ask this group to, to put numbers to that from a energy savings perspective or from an economic impact perspective. But we certainly feel like from an ice perspective, having two sheets of ice under one roof. As you look at the, the landscape of ice arenas in the state of Minnesota, it has largely, and like over the course of the last 15 years, gone that direction. As communities have made improvements to their ice arenas, they've largely gone to putting their arenas underneath one roof. And Mr. Ward, if you have anything to add with your experience in different ranks, feel free to interject with it. But from, from our perspective, seeing tournaments, running tournaments from a hockey perspective, from a figure skating perspective, and being able to run synchronized skating competitions, to be able to have all of that housed under one, in one facility essentially, with enough shared locker space, community locker space to meet those demands. I, I think, you can almost go as far as saying the opportunities are endless to that. Figure skating, a few years ago, we hosted a, a regional synchronized skating competition that our club really ran the legwork for. You all know about it, the Midwest competition that we hosted at Ralph Finkelstadt Arena in Grand Forks. And when the people that run that tournament or that competition from a national level came to our community and saw our facilities and saw the Civic Center, they said to our planning committee, why aren't you hosting it here? And it, it wasn't from a seating capacity perspective that we couldn't host it. We couldn't host it at that facility because we didn't have the locker space to meet the requirements of the bid that the competition was asking for. In, under this facility with potentially 12 locker spaces, community locker spaces? And shared access to both facilities on the same level? Now, all of a sudden, that competition's within our realm of realism. State and regional hockey competitions, they're, they're almost across the board now hosted in facilities that have two ice sheets under one roof. It's not against the rules to host it as a state, we're hoping to host one in a couple of years. But Minnesota Hockey is, running that organization likes to put two tournaments under one roof because it makes it more of a focal point for the state to know where they're gonna go and to be able to all get there at the same time. And that's just talking about the winter ice facilities. It's not even talking potential impacts to businesses, you know, around that site. I, I think, yeah, I think that there's all kinds of opportunity for potential growth to that as it goes.
I can help you with that, Reed. I was in on the ICAUN, and the CVB came out with a study. Grand Forks now has anywhere between 14 to 16 tournaments every year. They used to hold zero. And they figured the economic impact for each tournament was between the 300 to 500,000 dollar range? In taxable dollars spent in the community for that each weekend. So tournaments we would hold might not be as big here, but we'd, we'd be in that 100, 200, quarter of a million dollar range of money spent in the community.
And that's, I think that's what we're, we need to talk about too. Because, I mean, when we talked, when we brought you on, that was one of the things we talked about, right? Was let's bring more events to East Grand Forks. And I think when, when Barry's done with the chamber study, I think that's one of the things they're gonna find out is that, you know, those type of events are the things that we have the most opportunity to capitalize on. So parks, parks and recreation, in my opinion, isn't supposed to be a, you know, it's not a money, it's not a profit center. It's not something we're supposed to make, you know, a bunch of money on. I mean, for the most part, there's very, you know, you have to get to the professional or high-end colleges to be doing something. You know, what we're trying to do is provide a, a great environment for our community, but also something that can be a benefit to everybody in our community, which is all the businesses. We had a new hotel in town that, you know, can, now we can support, you know, quite a bit more. I think, like, like the mayor said, this might not be the final draft, but I think it's, it definitely gives us a, a bullseye that we can start shooting for. And I, and I appreciate all the work that you guys did and all the work that the steering committees have done to get us this far. Because, like I said, we already know that this is something that those communities are already talking about, you know? And that's, that's the first step in that, that partnership, that financial partnership, I think, getting that buy-in. So thank you, guys.
One thing, I'll, I'll just add a little bit to that too. You know, when you have a combined facility where you have multiple sheets in one location, you're really saving a lot in operational costs too. You know, we're looking at replacing two different systems right now, but if you can combine that into one refrigeration system, that's a substantial cost savings upfront. It's a substantial maintenance, operation savings, staffing. They're all in one facility, you're sharing, you're sharing mechanical systems, restrooms, things like that. I mean, that's pretty substantial. So, I mean, you have a beautiful arena right now at the Civic Center. There's not many arenas that, community arenas with that type of seating. And it, it's, it's a great facility to build on, sure.
Anybody else have anything? Let's see, no? Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to number two, discussion on South Bridge hydraulic study. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I should probably only take slightly longer than this last item. This one hopefully will be a little bit better. The, there's been some discussion. The MPO will be contracting with a consultant to conduct a hydraulic study to determine the feasibility of the placement of a south end bridge somewhere between, for, between East Grand Forks and Grand Forks. There is a little bit of discrepancy between the two cities. City of Grand Forks has voted to authorize three locations, Elk's Drive, 32nd and 47th. City of East Grand Forks has voted to authorize just one location. With the, what we've heard from the Grand Forks, City of Grand Forks and some of the representatives is they acknowledge that 47th Avenue is outside of the flood protection system for east side. And they do agree then that that would not really be feasible for us to kick in for that location for the, for paying for that study. However, they would like us to split the costs for Elk's. They do see that as a viable location, and it is within our flood protection. So I guess with that, the issue before the council tonight is should the City of East Grand Forks amend our resolution approving the hydraulic study for 32nd to include Elk's? Cost for each site is estimated at 30,000, so with the 50-50 split for the two would be 15,000 each at a total of 30,000 dollars. So I guess with that, we, I'll take any questions. I know we have had some discussions with Mr. Wilford from the chamber on the value of that. And I know that some of council members have had, have heard some on this as well, so take any questions.
Mayor?
I know we have it in our long-range plan through the MPO to build the bridge at 32nd, and it makes a lot of sense to continue down that line as we have. And I applaud Mr. Vedder and others who have worked hard to keep this thing moving forward with good momentum through a credible process. I mean, nobody has, in this room, has singled out 32nd. I mean, nobody has, in this room, has singled out 32nd as the corridor that we choose. It's come through an exhaustive effort over the past 30 or 40 or 50 years to identify that corridor as the logical one. And yet, here we are now. I know Grand Forks at a point said they wouldn't invest additional dollars that would go toward that and it appears they've made an exception to that in order to, to study the hydraulics. Maybe we could take it as an olive branch from them and say, you know what, let's go ahead and, and continue the exploration on Elks. So that would open us up to, to paying half of those two. Then in addition to that, something we have discussed is if we just go 32nd and what if we find the hydraulics are not feasible to go there, but now we'd have to lag by a year or so and turn around and do the study at Elks if that's the second alternative. And so we've lost that amount of time ultimately toward completing a bridge on the, on the neighborhood on the south side of, of our city. So for those two reasons, really a cooperative effort with Grand Forks, keeping this option open, and also compressing the timeline if we find that 32nd doesn't work, I can support paying half the study for both of those locations.
Anything else, sir?
I think one of the things that we talked about and Mr. Murphy alluded to, we met with Mr. Wilford on the discussion of the bridge, and one of the things that I brought up, even right after Grand Forks passed what they were funding, I contacted Mr. Murphy and I said, well, you know, for me personally, I was like, okay, I'll do 32nd, but I didn't want to, didn't know if I wanted to do anything else, because I didn't really know what Grand Forks was going to approve or fund. And after talking to some of the councilmen over there and especially the president, Sandy, I think it's rightful for us to, if that's even a word, right? You know?
Appropriate?
Appropriate, good, thank you. To fund it and to look at it, to keep this process moving, to showing that we as a city are wanting to find a solution, wanting to get this moved forward, wanting to get this done. I, I think it's only right that we do this. And I think this will help us, together with Grand Forks, to have a better understanding and agreement that we all want to get to one solution and find a, a position where this bridge to go. I know that if 47th was in our area, we could look at, it's not. It's out of our hands right now, but I think this right now is, is the proper thing to do, so. Any males have anything?
Mr. Dale Helms.
Thank you. Is, is there any indication or has there anything been said? If Elks was another site to look at, are they looking at a dry bridge or wet bridge there? Does anybody know?
I looked at the, at the breakout and at each site, and the fact that Elks, it was much more than double. It goes from a little over 20 million to close to 60 million to go high, dry, and the hydraulics way worse on a high, dry bridge. The reason the costs are so high to go high, dry, you have to come out into the neighborhoods so far, you're buying more property, you're doing a greater span. The reason the hydraulics end up worse is because you're also do, doing the approaches with soil and that additional soil, it's almost like I had, they had a hydraulics guy at one of the meetings, the, the joint meeting that we had. He said, picture your high, dry bridge as an earthen dam with a hole in the middle. And so you've done a lot more earth buildup on the two ends. And so, as much as I, I heard you say it the other night in Grand Forks, I can't really support another floodable bridge. I don't see how any of these, the costs are excessive the way they are, anywhere from 21 to 30 million dollars, depending on the site and the final alignment, to build a floodable bridge, to go up pushing 60 million dollars on a neighborhood connection. It won't happen. And as much as we need that, so maybe Merrifield or this other, you know, bypass one could be the high, dry bridge. That one actually could be built more affordably in the high, dry without as much of an effect on the hydraulics. So Elks will more than double to go high and dry, 32nd will double. As much as I'd love another bridge that's not susceptible to flooding, these neighborhood bridges cannot be that.
Anybody else have anything? See none.
So, yeah, I guess is there a consensus to move this forward for bringing the resolution?
I'm for it.
I have no problem.
Mr. Grass and Mr. Vedder, I'm, I don't even have to ask you, so I-
[laughing]
Mr. Vedder, are you fine with moving it forward?
I'm fine.
Vote on it tomorrow, next week?
Yes.
I guess moving forward, we can vote on it next week.
Good, I got it. Thank you.
Number three, request to prepare a report of feasibility for 20th Street Northwest and Fifth Avenue. Mayor Gander.
All right. So we've talked now for quite a while about, you know, going all the way back to looking at our street replacement policy, identifying streets around our, our city that are past their usable lifespan and in need of, of full reconstruction. And so this 20th and Fifth, if you all know where it is, it's 20th from somewhere around just a little bit east of Fifth to where the concrete streets where the old FEMA Park was up to Eighth, and then Fifth from 20th going south to 17th. So those are the two areas and-
Is that close to 20th and Fifth?
Say that again.
Is that close to 20th and Fifth?
Yeah, it's all of that.
Okay.
But you gotta know, you gotta know where it goes to. You know, how far west does it go?
Sorry, it's been a long day.
Yeah. And you'll see why it's relevant. You'll see why it's relevant, because I'm running into another conflict. If it go, if it went all the way wrapping around past Eighth, for sure I'd have another conflict. So anyhow, for us to meet with the neighbors, we would want to show an estimated cost of street replacement for each of the neighbors. And so we could have a neighborhood meeting, hopefully close to where they live, and say, to your parcel, best we can tell, street replacement would cost X amount of dollars. Again, with some variability, not knowing about where the bids would come in and other factors. And so the first step toward being able to give that information to the residents at the neighborhood meeting, before we could even meet with them to any benefit, we would do this, report a feasibility, and that would happen. Again, they would establish those rough dollar amounts and then we could gather with the neighbors and have this conversation. Just so everybody knows, the cost of report of feasibility isn't a front-end cost, so the city would not have to put out tens of thousands of dollars on the front end in advance of this. It ultimately gets rolled into any street replacement that would take place there. So it certainly bears a cost, but the cost becomes part of the project. It's not broken out at the front end and paid by the city in order to get that done. So that'll be coming before the council as a request, so that we're properly notified and, and ready to have that conversation with the residents, hopefully in their neighborhood, to talk about replacing those streets.
We'll have a map for you too, so you can see where it's at.
A map? We like a map.
Yep. That one right there.
I think that's gotten to be just about like the bridge deal. It's been so long that it should have been done that-
Twenty years ago.
It's time to start looking at that one.
I used to live on 20th, moved away about 15 years ago, and I knew when I lived there, this street's going to have to be replaced very soon, 15 years ago.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you. We've brought this street up in the past and citizens that live on, in that area have always shot it down. So are the citizens bringing it forward now and asking us to do this feasibility study?
It's a great question. What we will tell them is, if it's going to happen, you will do a petition and you will bring it to us. But they can't even, you know, if we aren't fully even ourselves knowledgeable about what is the process of petitioning to replace a street and we're way closer to it than our residents are, we owe it to them to just show them, if you all want to do it, it will be a petition that you, you know, someone will have to take the lead in this neighborhood, circulate the petition, get the necessary signatures, and bring it to us. Well, they can't even go to their neighbors and say, want to replace the street? What are we talking? Three grand? 25 grand? What are, what are we talking? So really, we're just trying to arm them to get to that step, but it will only come forward through a petition process led by someone in that neighborhood.
So at this point in time, no one from that neighborhood's came, came to us and said, how do we do this?
Lots of them are saying, what are you going to do about our streets? What's, what are you going to do about our street? And we tell them it's full replacement? What does that even mean? That's where we are.
Okay, so the second question that I have, the feasibility study, I understand that that gets rolled into the project. What happens if they don't do the project and the citizens say, nope, we're not going to do it again?
That's what I, and we'll have to ask our engineer.
Well, I could, they, they, so it's, it's a cost that would be paid by the city at that way. If, if the project doesn't go forward, there's no assessment to put on it, so we would, we would absorb that cost at, at this point. And it just depends on what the shelf life of that feasibility report is. So, so if it does not go forward, ultimately that, the feasibility cost would be paid by the city.
Maybe we could have that at the council meeting.
Is there one out there that has been done in the last?
Five?
I know it hasn't been brought up in the last five years.
I know he has done-
I've been here.
We've seen some numbers on it, but they are very preliminary estimates. We've seen some numbers, but you'd have to break it out to the individual properties. I do feel we owe it to them. If they really are going to even petition to have the street replaced, they need to know ballpark, what are we talking?
And that, that raises a good point. Moving forward, if this is the way that we're going to do special assessments, we should have some sort of a information packet so that if citizens do come forward in the future and say, we need our road done, how do we get that done? At least then we'd have a packet for them that, here's the steps you need to take, other than us again coming forward and saying, hey, we're going to do this feasibility study and then we're going to have a public hearing and here's your feasibility study, do you want to move forward with it? Let the citizens come to us.
I think the more information they get their hands on, the earlier, the better.
And I guess it'd be fair to say though, too, either way you would do it, even if, even if it was brought up by citizen petition, and the, the city then undertook a feasibility study based on the petition from the, the citizens. And it comes back and we have our, our assessment hearing, preliminary assessment hearing, and there's a lot of objection to it because it comes back high. So even if it was initiated by, by petition, we would, we could, we, there's still the possibility that we would end up absorbing those costs, because if it comes back high and we don't go for it, we still have to pay that.
Any males have anything? See none. Entertaining motion adjourned.
Who?
Who by Helms?
Second.
Second by Vedder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Motion is carried, meeting is adjourned.
So you don't even need to read that note? That note's for you there. Oh, excuse me.
Pardon me.